September 26th meeting of the Parker Planning Commission to Order at 7:00 PM. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, roll call. Absent is Duane and Eliana. Tracy is seated for Duane and Susan is seated for Eliana. Right? Next item, approval of minutes. Are there any further additions or corrections to the minutes from the meeting of September 12th?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the September 12th minutes.
Second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that we approve the Planning Commission minutes from September 12th. Please note your vote on your computer.
So if I'm abstaining, do I click yes or no?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I abstain.
Something like that.
No just creates havoc.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Next, we will move to item 6A, and that is a public hearing on the E-470 right-of-way northeast zoning. We will open the public hearing at 7:02. Paul, you don't look like Carolyn.
I was gonna say, nobody's picked up I'm not Carolyn?
Yeah.
No, I'm just filling in for Carolyn.
Your beard is longer.
What's that?
Your beard is longer, and don't tell her I said that.
Hey, Facebook news.
What's that?
We'll make sure of that, too.
Yeah, yeah, we'll make sure. We'll save it for a dark day. No, thanks, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Carolyn to present to you the E-470 area northeast plan development zoning. Please note that the record does indicate that the public notice requirements have been satisfied for this request. The subject property this evening is a section of the E-470 right-of-way. It's generally located north of Cottonwood Drive, adjacent to the Highlands at Kings Point Plan Development. The town is acting as the applicant and representative in this particular application. The site is roughly six and a half acres in size comprised of three parcels. It's located within the town's municipal planning area. It's currently zoned A1 in Douglas County, which is an agricultural zoning designation, and is adjacent to Parker on three sides, the east, the west, and the south sides. There is a sister application for annexation for the site into the town. While Planning Commission does not hear or make recommendations on the annexation application, the zoning does require a hearing and recommendation from this body. And the reason it's here this evening is that the town's regulations do require that any application for annexation also has an associated zoning application. Within the town's master plan, the subject property is identified as the E-470 regional commercial/retail district. This character area includes things for more intense retail uses. Think of large format retailers, restaurants, uses focused on serving both local and regional needs, and other commercial uses such as office and entertainment may be appropriate. This traffic serves the transportation network for such adjacent properties. As such, the proposed zoning is consistent with the goals and strategies of the master plan for the following reasons. It helps ensure adequate opportunities for expansion of the town's economic base. It will serve the commercial corridor along E-470, and it will support existing businesses and draw new development to this area. The E-470 zoning is an existing zoning that's simply being expanded to the subject property. That zoning allows for commercial uses that would be appropriate within a corridor such as the E-470 corridor. Therefore, staff has reviewed the zoning of the subject property against the nine criteria that have been detailed in your staff report this evening, set forth in the land development ordinance. Staff has determined that the criteria have been satisfied, and the proposed zoning may be recommended for approval. Staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend, that Town Council approve the E-470 right-of-way northeast plan development zoning request. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for any questions you all may have.
Questions for Paul? No?
No.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, we will open the floor to public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, step forward to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment period. Do we need any further information?
No, sir.
No.
All right, we will close the public hearing at 7:06. Planning Commission discussion?
The project does meet the nine criteria and is also consistent within the master plan. I think it's just almost a housekeeping scenario to bring it in, and we will, you know, as you said, be followed up with an annexation of it. I think it'll just be a nice fit into the town, so I'm in favor of it.
Yeah, I agree with what John said about annexing it into the town and making that area complete there.
I agree, it meets the nine criteria, and I think it's practically housekeeping.
Yep, I agree. I see it's, the proposed zoning is consistent, so I'm in all for it.
I also agree, as it does meet the criteria.
I agree, I have nothing to add.
And I would concur with my fellow commissioners. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the E-470 right-of-way northeast property zoning request.
I'll second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the E-470 right-of-way northeast property zoning request. Signify your vote on the screen. Thank you. And that passes unanimously. All right, thank you. Thank you, Paul. Item 6B. It's a public hearing on the Canvas filing number one minor development plat. We will open the public hearing at 7:08. And it looks like you're on again.
Or better for us, I'm back.
You're back again.
What's that? You want me to put on a wig?
It's Paul.
Yeah. You ready, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. So the next public hearing on the docket this evening, again, is the Canvas filing number one minor development plat. The track it project number is SUB-18-010. Again, the applicant has provided the notification affidavit saying that they have legally noticed the hearing this evening. Subject property is located at the northeast corner of Parker Road and Ponderosa Drive. The subject property was annexed and zoned for C commercial uses in March of 2006. Subject property is about four point, excuse me, 5.4 acres. To the north is some recently annexed commercial property where the Midas, the Harley-Davidson, those uses are. To the east is Pine Lane Elementary. To the south is Ponderosa and the Coffee Cabin use. And then to the west is Parker Road, and then the Burger King and some inline retail. The applicant has submitted this minor development plat in order to create four lots for commercial development consistent with the zoning on the property, and two drainage tracks for drainage purposes. The minor development plat that's before you this evening is a type of subdivision application. During this review, things like lot sizes and layout meet the town standards. Additionally, shared improvements and infrastructure is reviewed for compliance with town standards. Your action this evening is based on specific criteria found in the town's land development ordinance. That will be a part of the presentation here in just a moment. Individual site development is not evaluated with the minor development plat. However, if approved, site-specific improvements are evaluated at the time of a site plan The town's master plan calls out the subject property as a central commercial identification. That is intended to be the commercial core of the town, focuses on core retail, services, offices, lodging, restaurants, and entertainment. The creation of four commercial lots is consistent with this master plan designation. The image on the screen in front of you is the proposed minor development plat. Again, four lots for commercial development. Those four lots are indicated by the red lines, and the two tracks for drainage are indicated by the green boxes. There is a full movement access kind of in the south in the middle of the property off of Ponderosa Drive. There will be no access provided off of Parker Road. As alluded to, there are specific criteria for the approval of a minor development plat. Those are listed on the screen in front of you. As a part of the review of this application, and in concert with our referral partners, staff has determined that the applicant has met all six of these criteria. All referral agencies given an opportunity to respond to this application have responded with either advisory comments or no comments related to this request. And with that, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve this request for the Canvas filing number one minor development plat at the northeast corner of Parker Road and Ponderosa Drive. That would conclude staff's presentation. However, we certainly are available for questions. Additionally, the applicant is here for questions for them.
Questions for Paul first?
Paul, could you go back to your slide with the access from the south briefly? That will be going through a drainage area. Take the, where's the access in relationship to the star?
So the access? The access is generally consistent with the star's location. There will be, the purpose of the two drainage tracks is so that there's not one that the access would have to cross. So the drainage will be split on either side of the access.
So it won't be contiguous across?
That's correct.
Paul, one of the comments was regarding a gas line that's been abandoned on the property. How is that kept safe for the public?
Well, so the line and the associated infrastructure is no longer there. It's just, at this point, it's an easement on a map that could be easily vacated.
Oh, I had the impression from the comment that there was actually a physical gas line that was still there that had been capped at one end but might still have actually gas in it, so.
Based on the analysis and the review, it's staff's understanding that that pipe is not in service.
Okay.
The access to the property off of Ponderosa where the star is, is that where the current access is now? Or is the star moved up towards Parker Road? Because I know there's access to the property now, and it seems like it's a little farther back than maybe.
Staff will ask the applicant to come up and say that without speculating.
Yeah, if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Swatton, 6160 Johnson Way, Arvada, Colorado.
Thank you.
And I think that the access has moved just slightly, like 10 to 20 feet to the east along Ponderosa, so away from the intersection.
So where the current access is now, it's 10 to 15 feet to the east of that?
I believe so, yeah.
So a little farther away from Parker Road?
Section, correct.
And as part of the review, the town's Public Works Engineering Division did review the application and ensure that the location met the access spacing requirements.
Yeah.
Further questions? Paul or the applicant?
No.
All right, thank you. All right. Again, as this is a public hearing, we will open the hearing to public comment. If you have a comment, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public comment. Need any further information?
No, sir.
No.
Paul, I have one more question that might not be appropriate here, but just for curiosity. At Pine and Ponderosa, is there in the near future, do you know of any signal light that will be installed there?
Staff's not aware of any. I will say that that intersection is in unincorporated Douglas County, so any future improvements to that intersection would be through the Douglas County government.
Right, okay.
Further question? All right, we will close the public hearing at 7:15. Commissioner, discussion?
I see this as it meets all six of the plat criteria. It will also be nice to have some potential developed commercial property up there, creating some sales tax revenue, and I think it would be just a nice addition to the area.
Yeah, it'd be very nice to have that area developed since it's been barren for a while, I guess, so I'm in agreement to have it annexed or rezoned and divided into the four tracks or four lots.
Yeah, I think it, as it meets all the criteria, but it also turns it into more usable lot for multiple uses, which I appreciate. I'm in full support.
I agree with my fellow commissioners that this would be a great addition for that area of the town.
I look forward to the development going on. I agree with my fellow commissioners.
Agreed, I have nothing to add.
All right, I'm glad to see something happening on that property, so I'm in support of it as well. Do we have a motion?
I move Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Canvas filing number one minor development plat.
I second. It's a toss-up. It's been moved by John, seconded by Ruth Ann, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve the Canvas filing number one minor development plat. Signify your vote on the screen. All right, thank you, Paul. All right, now we will turn to items. First, we'll start with item 7A, and this is a public meeting on a draft ordinance, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the kiosk program. Bryce?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Section 10.13.080 of the municipal code allows the town to administer a kiosk program for home builders, to advertise new residential developments on kiosk signs located in the town right-of-way, provide directions to them. Current home builder advertising has evolved. Now the town has the option for home builder kiosk services to be provided by third-party sign providers. The proposed ordinance adds the ability for the town to designate a third party to provide home builder signs within the town owned right-of-way. Chapter 10 amendments typically do not go before the Planning Commission. However, since this proposal relates to both new signage and development, staff felt that it was important that the commission be aware of the proposal. I have a picture up here on the screen here. I realized after I wrote the staff report that you or the public may not know what a kiosk, builder kiosk sign is. This is an example of one from somewhere in Texas, I think. This is not what ours would look like if the town were to contract with a vendor, but it gives you an idea of what the sign type is. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that Town Council approve an ordinance to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding kiosk programs. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
Bryce, if this goes through, are you going to remove all the existing kiosk signs that are around for builders that are in desperate need of maintenance?
So they've actually been removed.
I just saw one the other day on Jordan.
Email me, I'll talk to our Public Works Department.
Thank you.
I was told they were removed, but yes, the answer is, the town operated the program for a number of years. From the town's perspective, it was time-consuming with staff and also financially cost us money. So the town does plan to put out an RFP seeking a partner to do it, to save us staff time and money.
Thank you.
The cost then would be borne by the builders.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Other questions for Bryce?
No.
Okay, well, as this is a public meeting, we will open it up to public comment. If you wish to comment on this item before us, step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we will close the public, I mean, the public comment part of the meeting. Do we need any more information from Bryce?
No.
Okay, and we will close the public hearing at 7:21. Planning Commission discussion?
I see no reason to approve the new kiosk signs or program.
You see no reason to?
You see no reason to do it? Oh, not to.
That's what I had to say. Not to approve them.
Got me there for a minute, Rich.
Agreed, you see these in other towns, and I think that the aesthetics of it would be a great addition to the town, so I'm for it.
Saving money is always nice, Bryce, thank you. I think it's a good program, and having a third party maintain it, it should be in better maintenance. I'm not picking on the town for past maintenance, but it should be kept up to date in a better fashion.
Yeah, I would agree, nothing to add.
I also agree, no other further comments.
I agree, I think it'll be a benefit to the town.
Sounds like a good idea. All right, do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the kiosk program.
Second.
It's been moved by Rich, seconded by John, that Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend section 10.13.080 of the Parker Municipal Code concerning the kiosk program. Please signify your vote.
So we no longer voice our vote? Just push the button and?
Just push the button.
Smile.
You can give a thumbs up or thumbs down if you want, Eric.
You look good on Facebook.
No, I don't. It's just me.
So we're okay? All right, next, we have, we have so many ordinances here. Item, this would be 7B, a draft ordinance, a bill, is a public meeting, a bill for an ordinance to amend chapter 13.02 of the Parker Municipal Code to add a definition for tourist home. We will open the public meeting at 7:23.
Bryce?
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. The land development ordinance specifically does not permit tourist homes as home occupations in residential areas. However, the LDO does not provide a definition of tourist home. The proposed amendment will add a definition of tourist home to section 13.02 of the ordinance. This amendment will provide clarification that short-term rentals, less than 30 days, are defined as tourist homes in the LDO and are therefore not permitted in residentially zoned areas. It is important to note that zoning is a permissive tool, meaning that if it is not, if it is a use that's not listed in the zoning, it is not permitted. Tourist homes are not listed as a use by right in any residential neighborhood, and therefore would not be permitted in those districts. Staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend section 13.02 of the Parker Municipal Code defining tourist homes. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
I have a question. When we talk about tourist homes, we're talking about peer-to-peer accommodations. You're talking about like Airbnb, Verbo, that sort of thing, right?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
Short-term rentals.
Right, short-term rentals. And when you drafted the definition that you decided to use, was it because of specific issues that had already arisen in town? What caused you to choose the definition that you did?
So, short-term rentals, under the current code, have not been permitted for quite a while. The reason that we chose to create a definition for tourist home was because as they were not permitted, it wasn't defined. And so the answer is yes, we've got a complaint that has come in, and we figured it would be important to have clarification, even though the code says you can't do it. Without the definition, it's not as clear as it could be, so this is intended to be more clear.
Right, well, under, without the definition, it could be a peer-to-peer accommodation that's going to include hosted homes, where the owner is always present if they have someone come and stay on a couch or a spare bedroom. Or it could also, without the definition, it would also include, say, someone has an empty condo, and instead of renting it out on a long-term rental, they decide to try to maximize their income by just doing a series of short-term rentals. So without a definition, both could be accomplished, you know, both, you could say one or the other is or isn't. It might, you know, a tourist home could be just an empty home that's being let out, or it could be, you know what I mean? So I understand the need for a definition. My issue is that we've chosen a definition here that specifically excludes hosted peer-to-peer accommodations, where the person's physically present in their own home when they have someone come and stay. And I didn't know if that was the type of accommodations that we've had complaints on, or if it has been the empty units that we've had complaints on.
So the complaints I'm aware of have been on empty units.
Okay, so my question is, why do we need to exclude the ability of people to do peer-to-peer accommodation that is hosted?
Right.
In that shared economy that many people like to move towards? As, you know, I totally support, you know, empty homes or condos being excluded, but I think an exception should be made for people who are going to host in their homes. A lot, we have, I looked at seven different websites for the town of Parker over multiple potential available days and everything else. I found about 12 homes currently that would be affected by this ordinance. Only one of them was an empty place. The rest of them were like a room in a private home that was going to be hosted. And I just think it's a little preemptive of us to say you can't host in your own home while you're present and have a guest. So I would like to see the ordinance definition be changed so that it permits that type of hosting only. And, you know, we're about to talk about the HOA rules and stuff like that in the next, in our next public meeting. The HOAs have a lot of input in terms of what you can do within that HOA, and I just, I just think that we're overstepping a little bit with this definition, and so for that reason, I would prefer to see it changed.
So that's, I mean, certainly a policy discussion. The reason we chose the route we did is because, yes, there are, there is potentially a difference between a hosted and a non-hosted. There are still impacts with a hosted that are, that can be within the community.
Right, but those are the kind of impacts that we would deal with with the HOA, wouldn't we? I mean, that's, that's part of the reasoning why we need to have the HOAs, is that we don't have neighbor versus neighbor conflict. You know, we anticipate our HOA stepping in for that role. So I'm not So I'm not sure why we need to go as far as we do with this definition.
So, so we've gotten a couple of complaints. Our community services department research has shown there are about 47...
Okay.
...within the town.
So they must be very popular, because none of them were available to rent on the dates that I picked.
So like I said, I mean, it's certainly a policy question that the planning commission and eventually town council can make a decision on. The interpretation to date has been that a tourist home is a short-term rental whether there's a person there or not. So without a, without a definition, the town planning director gets to make interpretations as to what that means, and so it has been enforced as, as it's written right now historically. But there certainly is a policy choice to be made by planning commission and town council on, on that definition.
And the next question I have is, while we have zoned that it's not permissible, we have 47 places that are doing it currently, how is that enforced? I mean, what, what is the consequence imposed upon people who would, you know, once we pass this, would continue to?
So, so community services right now, based on their current staffing, is complaint-driven, but it would be enforced through them being required to stop doing short-term rentals. The town would reach out to them to begin with, that's the first step. The second would be to issue a violation, and if they continue not to, they would go to court.
Okay.
Further questions for Bryce?
Bryce, to further Ruth Ann's conversation, which I somewhat disagree with, a hosted thing, which I dealt with next door to me, was a family living there who rented out their entire basement to 14 different people who slept on cots. And we finally got community service involved, and they were able to clean that up even before an ordinance, but on a hosted situation, there is no limit to how many people they can have in their home.
Oh, I agree, that unless you put those regulations...
We're not to discussion yet, we're doing questions, please.
Yeah, and so Bryce, my question to you is, community services now has the teeth, or this will give them additional teeth to enforce the ordinance, which way?
So this will clarify the teeth that they have.
Okay.
Further questions?
Yeah. I just needed to find that.
Not statements.
Thank you, Gary.
Sorry, Gary.
No further questions?
No.
All right, as this is a public meeting, we will ask the, we will open it up to public comment. Anybody who wishes to comment on this matter, step forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll, any further questions for Bryce? All right, so then we will close the public hearing at 7:32. Commissioner discussions, and I will referee.
No, I, my feeling is that peer-to-peer with a host is part of a growing shared economy movement that we have in this country, and I think that the way to respond to it is to say, you know, these are the rules of how many you can have. You know, you can't have, you know, if you have a one room, you can put two people in it, or you can host, and you have people register, and you make it a very easy registration process, and then people are able to host people, and you don't have the empty rooms or the impact to, you know, people buying up properties. And I don't think that's an issue in this town, because we're not big enough or close, we're not Breckenridge or Aspen. But I don't think that just saying you can't do this in your own home in order to help make your mortgage payment or pay for your childcare that you've got to pay for, I just, I just don't like it, so I am not going to support it.
I personally understand your feelings, but on this, I think that the town somewhere has to have some strong guidelines in order to go forward beyond the Airbnb situations, which are becoming very prevalent, and I think, you know, you're buying into, into a city where you're primarily in a single-family residence, be it an apartment, or a home, or a duplex, and to me, single-family means single-family, and if it's an extended member of the actual family, we can't say anything about that under this ordinance. So I personally am in favor of going forward with this type of an ordinance to control and maintain single-family dominance within the town.
Well, I certainly don't think single-family dominance is at risk in the town right now. I don't think it is in the future. I think that the, the issues that you raise are all issues that can be dealt in a regulatory manner, and we don't need to legislate out the entire aspect of peer-to-peer accommodation with hosts.
So I'm, you know, to, to, I guess, add on to this conversation is that, you know, this is really for short-term rentals that are less than 30 days. Cohabitation, in my mind, would be something that would be extended beyond 30 days. I think current LDO, while it doesn't specifically define what tourist homes are, they're not permitted, and so what this is doing, what this ordinance is asking for, is to clarify that piece of it, and because of that, I'm, I'm in support, as it's, it's a clarifying statement for the LDO.
I, I agree with Eric. Because it specifies the 30 days as short, less, 30 days or less, to me, that's, that's a big defining portion of it. I, I understand what you're saying, Ruth Ann. I think long-term, yeah, you should be allowed to rent out a spare room to someone who's going to maybe be in town for a period of time.
I'm specifically talking about the ability to, you know, allow someone to come and stay at your house for a weekend, for, you know, especially given the paucity of hotel space we currently have. It's nice to be able to have a place, you can have a friend come and stay to visit you in Parker. If you can't put them up in your own house, or if you've got, you know, no room, or if you're coming into town to see if you want to live in Parker, you can get a place in someone's house, stay in their spare room for a weekend, and leave. And that's the kind of thing that I think should be permitted. And I, this, this particular definition does not permit that, and I think that it would be better if we had a different definition.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't reading a guest. I'm, I'm thinking of a, of a paying customer.
They would be paying, yes, they would have come in on Airbnb or Booking.com, any one of those services, but the idea is that it's a hosted situation, it's not where they're coming into an empty condo and picking up keys from a third party.
No, I, I...
I'd like to see a distinction in our definition.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I think at the, the end of the day, the, someone coming in and, and in a neighborhood for a weekend, a week, that, it's starting to feel more like I'm in a commercial area as opposed to a residential area. So that's why, for me, I would support, because it specifically says that, that 30-day.
Mm-hmm.
Other comment?
I can see both sides with Ruth and John, but I do think we need to have some kind of definition like this, because there are a lot of people out there that will take it, or take advantage of what John was saying about the number of occupants in a particular place at one time, and when you get 14, I mean, two or three is understandable, but people will take advantage and just put as many as they can in there, so I think we need to have a definition like this.
To me, I, I, I'm a proponent of using services like Airbnb and VRBO, I get that, but what this is saying is, our LDO does not permit tourist homes, whether that's three days, 30 days, 60 days, so for me, this seems to be pretty clear that tourist home is a tourist home, whether you're there for three days or 30 days, and the LDO does not permit it as-is. So I'm, I'm for it.
Yeah, having experienced similar to John, only it wasn't next door, but up the street, I think we finally figured out they were using it, guys working in the oil patch rented out this whole house, and there was a constant flow of trucks, and you couldn't get up that street for all of the trucks that were parked there at different times of the day, because they sleep and work on shifts, and it was insane, and they finally moved out, so.
Well, see, that technically wouldn't fall under this LDO.
Well, there were different people there overnight.
But there was probably a single renter.
Right.
You know, I mean, so, I'm, I'm saying that that technically wouldn't have fit into, as a home occupation, a tourist home, so that doesn't solve that problem, and that's my concern, is that this ordinance doesn't solve the problem, and which is why I can't support it.
Well, and it seems like, too, it's, it's a taxation issue for the town, you know, somebody that's staying in a home, a tourist home for less than 30 days, that's not a registered hotel, or bed and breakfast, or whatever it would be, that the town has no ability to gain tax revenue from that.
Certainly not with this ordinance. However, if we had regulations in place, there's actually a mechanism that you can use through Airbnb, Booking.com, and those, where they would actually collect the tax for you and forward it to the town as a portion of the payment. You can negotiate that as a town with them, so it could be a means of actually collecting some additional tax income.
But, so I think in that scenario, though, we'd have to amend the LDO to permit that, because right now it does not.
That's what we're doing now.
Right.
It's no different than what we're doing now.
What we're doing now is we're, we're just providing a better definition, we're identifying something that's already written in there, but they're, they're providing more clarity behind what that actually means.
Right, I just think it's the wrong clarity.
Got it.
Further discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move the planning commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend section 13.02 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning the definition of a tourist home.
I'll second.
Moved by John, seconded by Rich, that planning commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to amend section 13.02 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning the definition of a tourist home. Please signify your vote on the screen. All right, next, item number 7C, a bill for an ordinance to add a new section 13.07.170 entitled Association to the Parker Municipal Code. We will open the public meeting at 7:41.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Earlier tonight, staff passed out a revised ordinance. The town attorney's office made some language updates to better align the proposed ordinance with language in our subdivision improvement agreement. The purpose of the proposed ordinance tonight is to add a new section, section 13.07.170 entitled Entitled Associations to the Land Development Ordinance. That will require the formation of a residential or commercial property owners association during the plating process to ensure enforcement of covenant restrictions, routine maintenance, and repairs to community infrastructure. Currently, there are two communities in the town that lack a homeowners association, Cottonwood and Country Meadows. These neighbors, neighborhoods demand significantly higher amount of resources from our community services department and other than, than, excuse me, than neighborhoods without HOAs. Also, in neighborhoods with no HOA, residents of a subdivision are forced to be self-governing for enforcement of property maintenance and other items such as trash pickup. To date, the town has negotiated the establishment of HOAs through subdivision improvement agreements for both residential and commercial developments. Most developers have been cooperative in this process as they see the benefits of an HOA for the long-term success of the neighborhoods they are building. However, recently, a home builder with multiple projects in town has chosen not to create an HOA for one of their projects. To limit the proliferation of the issues going forward, the proposed ordinance language requires the, requires the creation of an owners association to approve any plat or minor development plat. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that town council approve an ordinance to establish section 13.07.170 of the Parker Municipal Code requiring entitled associations with the amendments provided by staff at the public meeting. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
Bryce, the builder you mentioned, is it going to be grandfathered past him so that they, or they, so that they do not have to have an HOA, or are we going to make it retroactive and go back to them?
So the one project will not have an HOA.
Okay.
Other questions for Bryce? And obviously, Cottonwood and Sun Country Meadows will remain as-is?
That, that's correct, there'd be no change there.
Okay. Other question?
The, the only way to change those is if the homeowners themselves go out and petition to create a homeowners association?
That, that's correct, so my understanding is that 100% of the property owners would have to agree to it, which chances are slim to none.
It would have to be 100%?
That's my understanding, but I'm not a lawyer, I just play one on TV.
Okay.
Further question? All right, as this is a public meeting, we will open it to public comment. If you have a comment on this matter, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, commissioner, we will close the public hearing at 7:45. Commissioner discussion.
I like it. I'll support it.
I, I think there is, there is a need for having an HOA, and it helps, I think, keep property values up and keeps the neighborhoods looking good, or those communities looking good, and I, I think putting this in is a good thing for the town.
I, I agree, there's great value in HOAs, so I would support.
If they're managed appropriately, I absolutely agree.
The big if.
So I would be in support, sorry.
Yeah, all right.
I, I will support this ordinance.
Agreed, I have nothing else.
I certainly will support it as well. Do we have a motion?
I move the planning commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to add section 13.07.170 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning entitled associations.
Oh, where's the rest of it? John?
Read that one, John.
With the amendments provided by staff at the public meeting.
And I'll second.
Been moved by John, seconded by Rich, that planning commission recommend town council approve an ordinance to establish section 13.07.170 of the Parker Municipal Code requiring entitled associations with the amendments provided by staff at the public meeting. Signify your approval on the screen. Next item, item 7D, a draft ordinance, a bill for an ordinance to amend section 13.03.300 entitled Planning Department adjustments of the Parker Municipal Code. We will open the public meeting at 7:47.
Thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. You are in luck, this is the last presentation you'll hear from me tonight. Section 13.03.030 of the Land Development Ordinance currently allows for the planning department to make certain minor administrative adjustments to approve site plans and plan developments. Currently, changes to building elevations and materials are not permitted to be reviewed and approved through an adjustment process and require a full site plan amendment process. The proposed LDO amendment would support existing businesses through allowing, limiting, through, through allowing limited changes to building elevations such as color changes, materials, the addition or subtraction of doors and windows, to be approved quickly and administratively through a site plan adjustment process, rather than the lengthier, lengthier and costlier site plan amendment process. All changes will still be required to be in compliance with the LDO and the town's design standards. Staff recommends that the planning commission recommend that town council approve an ordinance amending section 13.03.030 of the Parker Municipal Code regarding planning department adjustments. As always, I'm available for any questions you may have.
Questions for Bryce?
No.
No. Bryce, just got to keep it up on you anyway. This will help the planning department, will this also be something to help builders or developers expedite in their process? or is it just primarily a housekeeping situation?
So this will help the Planning Department and this will help existing businesses when they make updates. Right now, like I said, the process is, is lengthier and costlier than this process. It will also help developers in the end. So often what will happen, just recently, we had a multi-tenant property come in and the tenant needed two doors instead of one on the elevation. And we had to, because our code said so, put them through the site plan amendment process. That's really not a big deal. And so this code amendment would allow them to do the site plan adjustment, which is, I'd say, 10 to 14 days, quick review by staff versus a much longer review.
Thank you.
Other questions?
No.
No.
Oh, as this is a public meeting, we will open it up to public comment again. Please step forward to the mic and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment portion. Further questions for Bryce?
Nope.
No.
All right, then we will close the public meeting at 7:50. Commissioner, discussion?
I think these are the type of housekeeping measures that help everyone. It's a, it's a, it's a good system for both the Planning Department and, as Bryce just clarified, for builders or new people coming in, people doing remodel. It's just going to expedite things. And it makes it a lot more friendly for people to come in and deal with planning.
Yeah, I agree with John and it just, you know, helps, helps speed up the process and I think make it less costly for everybody.
Yeah, the efficiencies are great. I'm in support.
I can also support the, the ordinance. I, in, in part because you have limitations built into it for how many different kinds of changes, what kinds of changes, that sort of thing. It's not a full bore, do whatever you want. So given the structure that you've given it, I can support the ordinance.
I agree. Working in the retail side of the world, I can see this happening when we have store remodels and I know the hoops that sometimes our store owners have to jump through and the timelines that it takes to get things done. So anything that helps speed up that process and, you know, help the approvals and move that quickly, I, I'm for that.
I also agree, anything that expedites the process is a good thing.
I have nothing further to add and certainly will be in support of it. Do we have a motion?
I move the Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.03.030 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning Planning Department adjustments.
Second.
It's been moved by John, seconded by Eric. The Planning Commission recommend Town Council approve an ordinance to amend Section 13.03.030 of the Parker Land Development Ordinance concerning Planning Department adjustments. Signify your vote on the screen.
Any further items, Bryce?
No, sir, a couple of staff items.
Okay.
A reminder that next meeting, October 10th, they'll be training again at 5:30 PM. Also along with that will be a study session on the recently completed Parks dedication study.
Okay. All right. All right, then we will adjourn at 7:53.